I was worried about not having a coffee for Friday's but I'm not worried anymore.
All right, it's 10 o'clock. Heavenly Father, we come before you to do the court's business today, the county's business. The SED guides us as we make the decisions. This is the holiday season and we ask that everybody remember what the reason for the season actually is. I ask you to be with those that travel today and over the next couple of weeks. Protect those that need protecting, those that protect us. In Jesus' name I pray, amen?
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On this Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas Texas, one state and one God, one indivisible.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for coming. At this time, any person with business for the court not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the court. No formal action will be taken on these items at this meeting. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes.
Yes, my name is Don available in 12,100 East Highway 180. Approximately four weeks ago. Fence that we have across the highway, the park or ranch that I lease, fence was damaged. Basically, a T-post was gilflooded from the tractor. After research, found out it was the county tractor. I sent my county commissioner a text, which wasn't replied to. I left him three voicemails, which wasn't replied to, and another text. And I have that on my phone if anybody would care to see it.
I'd love to see it.
Oh, I'd love to show it to you. Let's see here.
Go ahead and go ahead with your statement.
All right.
Y'all can look at that later.
No problem. Anyhow. I don't know how, why he wasn't got it because it shows it was doing it. Regardless, I feel that's disrespectful if that's the way it was done. I had to get hold of another gentleman and said he would give me a phone number to the foreman, which was Friday I called him. He had it fixed on Monday. Very, very apologetic. And it's not a big deal. It's just the fact that I felt that if I was ignored, that's disrespectful, especially to somebody who posts taxes here.
I agree.
You know? I don't know.
I don't have any.
But anyway, it's. I talked to the foreman, I'm sorry.
You do use the call.
Yeah, I called you three different times.
On his phone?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not, I know I'm over responding right now.
But anyway, three different times I called and all that. Which, like I said, feels disrespectful. But anyhow. Foreman apologized very profusely, said he wasn't told about it. Had he been told about it, he would have got it taken care of. And I think his statement, he said, I bet you whoever did it knows he did it. So I got a feeling he handled it pretty good. Then he fixed the T-post. It's, you know, it's just a six dollar fixes out here that they didn't and left it. You know? I gilflooded a lot of T-posts with tractors. Makes me mad every time. But that's not the way business should be conducted. That's basically all I got.
All right, thank you. Is there anything else not on the agenda? All right, thank you. All right, moving on to presentation and discussion of Departmentate Committee and Board Report.
If I may, let's say this is December the 6th, I sent a text message. December the 11th, I sent a text message. And by my phone it shows it was deliberately read.
Thank you. Any discussion of the Departmentate Committee and Board Report? Any MS is not slowing down. Nobody is slowing down. Strength is up.
Everybody moves.
Okay, Court Consider Approval of Previous Court Mass. With any of them?
I didn't see anything. I didn't see anything. But most of them were pre-physical.
All in favor? Court Discussing Consider Increasing Project Schedule and Statement.
Everybody taking vacation.
We're still trying to get it covered. Thank you. So you were aware, Texas Parks and Wildlife did approve an increase in the cost and signed paperwork yesterday. So, and that's the increase on, in the cost on the pump track. So that'll be covered. There's some work out there. Still waiting on some more information on some other things. Got the pad done for the restroom that should be delivered in four or five weeks now. Any further?
Actually, I've gotten done.
Right, okay. All right, Court Consider Accepting Donations to County Entities. Senior Center $840 and $7,895. Libraries. The whole list of books. Can't we go over the list? Name them all? There's my question that we've sent donations to. All in favor? Court To Recognize and Discuss Retirement of Kenneth Jones. How many years?
Twenty-five. Nineteen is the clerk. I have a little spiel here. Good morning. It is with many emotions this morning that I have the pleasure of announcing to you that January the 2nd will be my retirement date. I've had the honor of serving the Scurry County residents in the district clerk's office for 25 years, nineteen of those as the clerk of the court. Amongst some of the things that my staff and I have been able to accomplish through the years are as follows. With the help of the Scurry County Historical Commission, we did a million-page electronic scan, which made our records electronically available all the way back to sovereignty of county, which I believe was around 1890. Preservation of historical records was made, which made us compliant with a unfunded state mandate. And with the help of Terry Hanshu, our court reporter, we put in place a filing system for keeping and maintaining evidence and exhibits. Changing office requirements for the passport acceptance facility from pre-9/11 conditions to post-9/11 requirements was a big deal for our office. Also, we implemented a state-mandated e-filing system, which is another unfunded state mandate. And we've been through several challenging yet successful software conversions, although the results of the last one are still in question as we still have many unresolved issues and many that still pop up on a daily basis. I have been blessed with wonderful career right here in my own hometown. I dare say I have the best job in the world. Every day is a different and different challenges every day to overcome. I've made lots of friends and met many people on the fourth floor from all walks of life. As with all local government offices, there have been smooth roads and some not so smooth along the 25 years. And change is the one constant thing. But overall, I have enjoyed my time tending to the business of the district court and serving Scurry County residents. But I am also looking forward to the next chapter, where hopefully kicking back some and spending time with my family is a big part of it and chasing my grandkids around while I'm still able to keep up. I've always believed God put me in this office, for I am not capable of getting here on my own. And I always knew when he was ready, he'd take me out of this rope. And I am thankful he's allowing me to do this on my own terms. And so now let's get down to a little more fun business and have a retirement party this afternoon. Thank y'all.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we, there's no action we need to take. We just need to recognize that she is retiring.
We need to accept her. No, because she's retired.
Now, and that's all done by District Court.
Between these two, stay here.
I can stay with you.
All right, Court Discussing Consider An Interlocal Agreement with Lowy County For Housing Of Inmates. That is pretty much our standard agreement. Yeah, it's a little bit different. It's $75 a day. That's the only thing different than any of the others.
Probably have local cooperation agreement for the county for housing inmates.
Same. All in favor? All right. Court Discussing Consider Renewal Of An Interlocal Agreement With Fisher County For Housing Of Its Inmates. Would you make mention that we renewed the new offering of Fisher County? Sex and House. All in favor?
Did the amount on that one stay the same?
Yes, ma'am. I believe it's $60.
I didn't see, oh, there it is. It's attached to that one.
All right, Court Discussing Consider The Tax Abatement Applications Of Intercepted Power, Including Terms And Conditions Of Any Proposed Abatement Agreement And Authorized Notice To Be Published And Provided To The Other Taxation Units And Setting A Date For The Public Hearing On Proposed Abatement Agreement. Good morning. I know Mike cried and I know y'all do too. I didn't, Connor's back there.
This is Amanda Lee, Christian Feeny, from Intercepted Power. They're here excited about a project if they want to introduce for a couple of battery energy storage systems. So Lumina 1 and Lumina 2. You know, I'll let them go from here and present the information that they're wanting to present to y'all.
Thanks for having us here today. My name's Christian Feeny. This is Amanda Lee, my colleague. We represent Intercepted Power. We've been here before. We heard a few years ago presenting on the Lumina 1 and 2 solar PV projects. If you flip to the first slide in the deck, I'll give a brief overview of the company, a bit of a refresher. Some things are the same, some things have changed. And then we'll go through kind of side by side, give you an overview of the actual project that we're here to talk about, two large-scale battery storage projects that are co-located with the Lumina 1 and 2 solar PV projects. And then we'll give you an update on Lumina 1 and 2 as well. And then I'll be answering questions along the way. So feel free to interrupt me. Doesn't need to be too formal. So just a reminder, Intercepted Power is founded in 2016 by a small group of people that have actually been developing in Texas for quite a while. We, you know, same old, same old. We continue to develop in our core markets, split 50/50 between California and Texas. We continue to focus on developing a small number of very large-scale projects. From our perspective, that results in a higher rate of success. So then when we're here presenting, we can, we're talking about projects that we actually believe in, that we can bring to commercial operations. And then we also think it results in a better work product generally. And then we still focus as owners and operators of projects on developing strong relationships in the local community, building relationships with stakeholders and partner, key partnerships, as we intend to be here for a long time to come. In terms of things that have changed, when, I think when we were here in 2020 or 2021, we were a company of around 30 people. We've grown to around 200, mostly additional bodies to support the construction and the operations of the projects themselves. We have grown our development purview from solar to battery storage technology, which is what we're here to discuss today, as well as what we call green fuels projects, mostly developed, that we're developing in the Panhandle portion of West Texas. Oh, and then another note, since, and this is a good segue, I think, to the, to the following slide. Since we were here last, we've brought into late-dish construction or operations about 1.5 gigawatts of solar projects in Texas alone. 600 megawatts of those we still own as kind of a previous regime. And then 900 megawatts of those we're going to be owning and operating foreseeable future. So on this side, you can see what we've done in Texas in dark green. These are the projects that are in operations already. And then in light green, you see Lumina 1 and 2, which are, well, they're technically in operations, but they're going through the final stages of commissioning. And so we'll, we'll, we'll kind of declare them as operational early next year. And, and then in light, in the blue, what you'll see is another change is that we've kind of doubled or maybe tripled our, our development portfolio in Texas. And one thing that you won't see on here is the addition of the battery storage technology. So we'll get into that detail here shortly. But I think before we move on, Amanda, we'll give you an update on the Lumina 1 and 2 projects.
Yeah, so on the next slide, you can see two pictures of the projects. You guys are no doubt familiar with these names. I'm sure that you've received plenty of emails and phone calls from us over the years. And I hope you agree that all the bad dream has been worth it. We're very excited to have these projects producing energy and, as Christian mentioned, to have them operational really early next year. And that's a quick update on the Lumina PV projects. Now for us, because we've had so much success with those two projects, we're interested in a next sort of mini-phase two, which is to add the battery energy storage systems. And I've got two pictures of the Lumina projects down here where you can see the modules in orange. So the actual solar panels. And then we've enlarged the area where we would like to put battery energy storage in red. So in total, across the two sites, it's just the six acres that would house the storage. And we would like to put the storage within the existing PV fence line. So we wouldn't be increasing the footprint at all. So that's what we're here to talk about today. And I'll let Christian talk about some of the work we've done in the community over the last couple of years.
Yeah, this is just, I'll be brief here. I mentioned this on the first slide. We just want to continue to reiterate our desire to be active in the community, building local partnerships. Most, part, part of this is just like if you have, if there are organizations that are local that need our support or our partnership, please let us know. We, I think back in August, co-hosted a Stay Cool Scurry County event. So some of the folks from our, our safety team and our operations and our community engagement team came in for that event. So just want to, you know, as owners and operators of projects, we're going to be here for a really long time. So we want to be good neighbors. And I think as part of that, I mean, to, to expand on our philosophy of being good neighbors, in addition to the local benefit, to the local relationships that we like to have, I think we, it's important to highlight as a company, our desire to also procure locally or procure locally and procure domestic. So Amanda can give some background on that.
Right, on slide number six, you can see the names of some of the partners that we've selected to build these projects and to help us operate them as well as construct them. These partners are certainly not the cheapest options we had, but we, as a company, want to make sure that we're marrying our business decisions with our personal values. And so with that, it means supporting American companies, supporting American manufactured goods. An added benefit of that outside of the sort of ethical benefit we get is that it also insulates us from a lot of the risk around global supply chain delays. I know you all probably remember the news coming out of COVID when there were year-long delays for items getting through the ports. That's something that we're not going to be subject to in, in the ways that our competitors are. And so we're more able to get these projects online when we say they will be.
Yes, I don't know if we ever mentioned this, Amanda, when we were here before, but the solar projects that are currently built, those used for solar modules, for solar is the largest domestic manufacturer of panels in the U.S. We made a decision, I think, four years ago to stick with domestic partnerships for a variety of, for a variety of reasons. And I think to Amanda's point, that proved to be pretty effective. While we were giving them to construction, there were a large number of projects around Texas that just had a bunch of poles in the ground with no panels arriving. And that thankfully was not the case for us. On the next slide, we'll actually get into the details of battery, of battery projects. So as I, as I mentioned, feel free to jump in and interrupt me if you have questions. In terms of scope, each of the batteries is around 160 megawatts or 320 megawatt hours. That, that's the difference, the difference between max output at a given point in time versus kind of the, the duration. So, you know, it could be a max output for around two hours. So we have a two-to-one ratio on the batteries. Have to talk about that more. And they're going to be, as Amanda mentioned, co-located with the existing projects. So adjacent to the existing high voltage infrastructure. The goal is to have them operational by the end of the summer, when Texas probably uses the power most. And then potentially, you know, could have a schedule range up until the end of next year. And so we expect that they'll be fully operational and generating tax revenue by the beginning of 2025. The, as Amanda mentioned, they use a really small footprint. So around three acres each, so six acres in total. They're aesthetically, they're just like compartments that just look like. They're enclosed fixtures, like smaller than a house. You can kind of stack them next to each other, they can stack them on top of each other. So they're pretty non-intrusive. And I think in terms of high-level numbers, the, so the, the technology itself, I would say 10 years ago was relatively nascent. But over the course of the last five to 10 years, it's become quite mainstream. The deployment in Texas has lagged behind some other states. California has deployed a lot of batteries and there's been a lot of batteries deployed in the Midwest. We're starting to see a lot more deployment across Texas now for a variety of reasons. The, I think in 20, because of 2022, there are around nine gigawatts that have been installed around the country. We expect another 20, so around 3X, within the next two years to be deployed. And we, oh yeah, go ahead, please.
No, go ahead.
I was just going to say, we're personally planning to use the Tesla Megapack batteries, which are kind of like industry standard, top-of-the-line. They've got best software, not necessarily the cheapest, but we view to be the safeest and most reliable batteries. Yeah.
I wanted, I was going to ask about, I've got two questions now. For the first one, about the megawatt hours. You said two at maximum output.
Yeah.
What's the likelihood that they would be at maximum output for two hours or would in?
Yeah, there's, we, we run a variety of different dispatch models. And the way, the reason that we size it kind of on the two-hour battery is because what's really needed in Texas right now is there's, there's a lot of intermittent resources around the state. There's a ton of wind, there's a ton of solar. There's, if you look at like kind of a chart of when the solar is coming off line and the sun's coming down and the wind is picking up in the evening hours, there's this like two-hour gap right in between where there's, there's, there's a resource essentially missing. Generally what's happening is there's a lot of natural gas that's turning on. Dispatchable resources are coming up and filling that gap. And the battery, but in places like West Texas, there's less natural gas. And so, or at least less natural, fewer natural gas plants. And so the batteries are sized at that two-hour range because they fill that gap pretty, pretty perfectly. If you, anything kind of longer than that, we see declining marginal, marginal value. So what we would expect is on a given day, you're probably going to charge in the morning or during hours of the day when there's an excess amount of electricity. And you're almost always going to discharge in that evening, that evening kind of ramp period. Sometimes in the winter, there could be a morning spike. So we may be charging kind of overnight when power's cheap. And then right in the morning when people are starting to flip on their lights and turn on the heat. Yeah, and that's a good question. I mean, that, that really transitions to the next section, which is the quick resiliency. I think there are really two main things to talk about in terms of what batteries do. They can do a lot. They're a pretty amazing technology performance-wise. But the two things I think that they really offer are quick resiliency. They can dispatch extremely quickly, faster than any, any power plant that's on the system, which means that they provide frequency responses and other ancillary service value. So that if there are voltage or stability issues on long transmission lines, batteries provide a lot of stability, which is great, great when you are in a potential reliability event. And that's really what the Texas or cotton market has been asking for for a while. And then the second thing that they offer, which is kind of what we were talking about before, is their ability to take really, to take power from one time of the day when there's maybe excess electricity or there's not a lot of demand on the system, take that and just move it to times of the day when it's more needed. And in a, in a market where there's a lot of internet resources like wind and solar, that proves to be extremely valuable. So we expect in the winter, in the winter months, but then also in the summer, in the summer months, these are going to be heavily used and needed by the cotton market system. And then I, you know, I wouldn't want to come without mentioning safety. This is, I think there are really three things to mention here. One, the, the technology itself, as I mentioned, has been proven, battle-tested over many years. The standards and codes that have been developed by, by federal, state and local governments, but also just by the industry itself have advanced significantly. Tesla is state-of-the-art, has the best technology available. And we think is one of this, one of, one of, if not the safest technologies, comes with a pretty big manual. The second thing I want to note is Intercepted Power is, we have very high expectations for safety in our own safety standards. We're close, we're closely with local first responders, the fire departments and the 911 emergency services in the unlikely event does occur. And then lastly, well, this gives me comfort, but we have to go through a really robust And then lastly, well, this gives me comfort, but we have to go through a really robust and rigorous financing process, which requires independent engineers to review the viability of the product as well as the safety. And so no investor or lender is going to invest in a battery storage technology that doesn't have these proof points. So, and then the last thing, maybe the most meaningful thing, is just to talk about the benefits that add to the community in terms of jobs and dollars. So we do expect around an eight-to-twelve-month construction period with around fifty construction jobs. And we expect around six permanent jobs between the two projects. And obviously, the projects are significant investment. Even though the size is small, the investment is large. So we do expect significant tax dollars over around a twenty-year life to Scurry County Hospital and College. We estimate around ten million dollars, kind of depending on what the abatement, if we come to terms, may look like. And then there's no longer a three-one-three value limitation on the school district, so those taxes will be totally unabated. So we actually estimate around sixteen million dollars over a twenty-year period to the school district as well.
You should have us know the power of ocean fifteen point seven, they're scurrying telling the PM.
We'll look into that.
So it sounds like you're actually drawing power from the grid rather than, as some are doing, where whenever the grid becomes, where there's not enough, or there's not, you're putting too much power on the grid. Is it wind and solar shut, has to be shut off during that time? I mean, we see these.
No.
No?
Not necessarily. There may be like a correlation between that. We can pull from the grid, but we can also pull from the project itself. When they're kind of co-located, it's hard to say what, what's exactly happening. But generally, it's actually more likely, the correlation is more likely that we're going to discharge the battery. We're going to send out the excess of the electricity when the local solar and wind is coming off. And so, and those kind of two-to-three-hour stretches generally where you see the battery discharging, and then generally when the sun is, the solar is on and the wind is on, that's actually where wind will start charging. Because that excess electricity suppresses prices.
So you go both ways?
Yeah.
And so y'all are asked to shut down your project whenever there's too much power on the grid from other sources? Is that not, y'all are first?
On the solar projects? Yeah, there's a concept called curtailment. It's, it's all kind of like, ERCOT has, Texas has by far the most efficient energy market. That's why we love it. It's like very mathematical. It's very much based off of your price curve. And so they have a system of curtailment where when there's too much of excess electricity on the system, they just send you price curves, and they basically disincentivize you from producing because they, you basically start getting paid negative dollars. And so you get penalized for, for putting excess electricity on the system. So we respond to those price signals.
So that could be a time that you actually charge your.
Yeah, exactly. That's exactly right. Yeah, yes, that's kind of what you were, you were getting to, yeah. So yeah, when there's a heavy curtailment from the system, that's generally when the battery's like, yeah, great, pick them, charge for free.
Well, do you have any idea that there would be an expansion of that in the future?
Of our specific projects? Right now, we're not planning on it, and the reason is, and this is part of the reason why we want to add the batteries. There's quite a bit of curtailment in West Texas. There's, there's long transmission lines, and there's kind of like, you know, oil and gas demand goes up and down. Currently, we're in a position where these projects are getting hit with quite a bit of curtailment, so they're turning off mostly kind of in the fall and the spring. And so the batteries are actually kind of a, as far as the company's concerned, like a revenue protection against some of those instances. There are large load, there could be major load growth in West Texas that we predict over the next five to ten years. And if that's the case, we would love to come back to Scurry County and develop more solar. So that's something we're going to keep our eye on, and we like to co-locate projects as well in areas where we feel like we, you know, build good relationships with the local community. Yeah.
And that takes us to our last slide, where we just included outlines of the reinvestment zones that were previously approved for aluminum one and aluminum two, and, and how they follow then Snyder's School District. We're just drawing attention to the fact that the beds will still be located, but then those reinvestment zones.
And those were done in twenty-one?
I believe so.
Very good. Yeah, we have copies of those with the applications, so. We don't have to do a reinvestment zone? I like the idea of using Merit and Made.
Yeah.
That's true.
Yeah, what did you tell?
Yeah. Any questions? Any thoughts?
I guess these are y'all's two email addresses, correct?
Yes, yeah, if anything comes up, if you have any questions after this, feel free to reach out to us.
You talking about the per megawatt? I don't remember. And I can, and right now it's just accepting the applications and setting the public, public hearing date. I will have that information for you by then.
Yeah, there's another battery storage project, right, down in, at the Germant Subsection? I think, Keystone Project.
Yes, there is one there.
Yeah.
There's also that kinetic invest. Which really is a.
Which is a lot.
It's a battery, it's a. It's a storage because they've got blocks pulled up four hundred feet above the ground.
Right.
But they're generated, right.
Yeah, they're.
I guess you could consider.
At the same time, I think they.
They are.
Yeah, they are. We're going to have a small battery.
Yeah.
But yeah, I'll have that information for you.
Go ahead.
Public hearing.
Judge, I would make a motion that we accept the applications and to publish then the authorized notice to be published and provided to the other tax entities and setting a date for the public hearing on the proposal abatement agreement. And the best date would be February.
We've got, oh, yeah, February sixth is the thirty, first meeting after thirty days. However, if we wanted to, we could set a meeting anywhere on the twenty-third or the thirtieth or just.
Go with our regular in February.
Regular is going to be the.
Way out there.
Yeah, and six. Fourteenth, twentieth of February?
You're cutting it close on the sixth.
No, we're planning to do it on the sixth, yeah. Let's do it on the sixth. Am I right with the sixth?
February sixth?
Yeah, yeah, February sixth, yeah.
Click it.
All right, oh, okay. Okay. And y'all want to meet with the commissioners this is affecting right after the meeting?
Yeah, that'd be great, yeah. We can just answer more questions. No one taken, everybody, everyone's time here. But yeah, we just want to make ourselves available for the discussion.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Court, consider approval of Curtis' monthly support from November twenty twenty-three. And let's go ahead and do the personnel information, Court.
Just in the year, everyone like Jeff said, in vacation, using golf com, preparing to close it all up.
Questions?
Most of we accept the president's monthly personnel.
Thanks. All in favor? Court, consider certification of additional revenue in the form of supplement pending from TAC. Just one sixteen.
No, first two.
Two. And, yep, reimbursement from West Central Texas Council of Governments. Join you both.
Um, the one from TAC is for the damaged ambulance that said it wasn't our fault. It was his fault on that one.
Hey. It does, yeah.
One thousand six twenty-three ninety-nine on that. And then they will go after the person's insurance to reimburse that. Then the, the COV, West Texas Central Texas Council of Governments, reimbursement for the EMD software cost share project, fifteen thousand that EMS had taken out of their Texas class to help fund that. This is getting that back. And we will request it back in the EMS Texas class account.
Okay.
Certification of additional revenues.
Okay, I'll be there. Court, consider acceptance of the annual continuing education certificates and initial transcripts of the Scurry County Texas Assessor Collector. She has been trained.
That's good.
Appreciate that.
Except for the continuing education certificate from Michigan State for the Scurry County.
Sorry. All in favor? All right, now for everybody's favorite part, line of transfers, I think.
As presented, as presented.
It's not as fun for y'all as it is for me. But I have been told by a couple of people that they don't want to sit through all of these, so. Um, I can read every one of them, or the line on transfers, obviously, balance out is from one line to another line, all throughout all the county lines, which are all of these. Uh, but there are a few budget amendment ones, if you want me to read just the budget amendment ones, or if you want me to read them all. Your first.
I do, yes, please.
So as presented on line on transfer?
Yes.
That's your step to sign.
I'll be here for a while.
Okay, budget amendments, four oh nine, which is non-departmental, Miss Landspain's repair, twenty-eight thousand two sixty-three ninety-three. And the all-department software, three hundred and sixty-nine thousand three twenty-eighty-five. This was due to the changeover on the software programs and then also having to continue to pay Idocket for an extended amount of time. Then four oh nine, non-departmental direct screening, six hundred dollars, just to clean that up. District Court, Court of Honor Attorney, forty-four thousand two eighteen, went over. Those are obviously indigent defense. We have no control of the cost of those. This is part by law. Share Department, Victim Education, two seventy-five seventy-five, this is that mine per grant that we get. Precinct three road material on construction, thirty-two thousand six twenty-five. This is for the block line road and the prepaid a lot for block line roads. For the text doc grant, I will be submitting that to get reimbursed, don't worry. Law Library, three thousand five forty ninety-three, plan of being a federal line. Corral Security Fund, four thousand nine eleven fifteen. American Recovery Plan Fund, the ARCA, this is the administrative fees that we had to pay earlier in the year when we were discussing the buildings. This was forty-five thousand, this is just to put that money into there, straight from the ARCA fund. L.A. Construction INS Fund, administrative expense, five hundred dollars. And then this one is various county lines, it was the final one that I did yesterday after printing the last check for the year. Non-departmental, Safety Meeting Line, four twenty, District Court, Court of Honor Attorney Line, nine thousand one sixty-six thirty-eight. District Attorney, Office Supplies, six dollars and ninety-four cents, Health Unit, Contract Labor, one hundred and seventy-five, Health Unit Communications, two sixty oh seven, Park Utilities, one thousand one nineteen fifty-two, Current Improvement Court House renovation, forty-one hundred, Pro Shop merchandise, six thirty-nine thirty-eight, for total of fifteen thousand eight eighty-three twenty-nine. No.
Thank goodness, because I already started signing all of them. Uh, how about the council table?
Council table is nine hundred and one thousand four ninety-four seventy-four.
I'm talking, we have group accounts.
I will tell y'all that I did a cursory glance at end of the year's where we stand. Just as a cursory glance, right now, we brought in more revenue than budgeted, and we have spent less money than budgeted. So that's a good way to end the year. Thank you. And I say you're welcome.
See you one time, two to four?
Two to four. District Court's office.
You'd be back?
And, uh, not yet.
All right, uh, was there a motion for, you did, yes, all in favor? All right, sorry, we got, side track. All right, Court, Court to recess to the Texas A&amp;M Agro-Life Extension Service for the quarterly commissioners for interpretation. Y'all would, you two, meet with Intersect before you go over there. I'll shoot her checks and let her know that.
Don't forget to sign the tables.
We'll be over there shortly.
Oh, we got to go over there, or do we go over there?
Okay. Oh, yeah, I just, we think.
Thanks, sir.
Yes.
Sir.
I'll be right back.